Free School District Board of Education on March the 11th, 2024 at 7:02 PM in the Round Lake High School Media Center. If I can get started first with a roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinger?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
All right, and first up is our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we need an approval for the meeting agenda, one update, communications to the board, B, the B pack update will not happen today, so we will go straight from A to C, and I need a motion to approve the amended meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second by Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have an approved agenda, and first up on that is special recognition and presentations, and that would be our athletic director, Mr. Carol Zach, with the boys and girls wrestling state qualifiers.
Good evening, everybody. State qualifying wrestlers, if you could come stand up here with me, please, while I say nice things about you. So we've got everybody here tonight, except Alejandro Cordova, who is currently on an airplane, so I'm still going to read his recognition piece, though. So we will start with the athletes who just most recently finished their seasons, and that is our female wrestlers, state qualifying wrestlers, starting with Raven Burnett. Raven's a first-time state qualifier. She was the Conan Invite Champion this year, the Maine East Invite Champion this year, the sectional runner-up, and she had 23 wins on the season. So fantastic, fantastic end to her career as a Round Lake wrestler for Raven. Next, we've got, excuse me, Riley Konkial. Riley is a two-time IHSA state qualifier. She was a sectional champion this year and had 33 wins on the season, so, and she's only a sophomore, so really excited for the next two years of Riley's career. And then, not to be outdone, Ireland McCain, done on the end there. Ireland is a three-time IHSA state qualifier, only one other, well, now two, because Alejandro did it as well, so one of three in school history to be a three-time state qualifier, and she's only a junior, so she's got another year to set the, to put herself all by herself there. Also, Ireland is a two-time state medalist. She had 32 wins this season, 31 pins this season, which is the girls wrestling record for most pins in a season. So really, really impressive, really proud of all three of these girls in particular, but also just the growth of the program in general. On the boys' side, we have, as I mentioned, Alejandro Cordova. Alejandro's also a three-time state qualifier. He was a sectional champion this year, regional champion, two-time All-Lake County, finished with a 38-9 record. This year, 120 career wins, which puts him fourth on the all-time career win list. Next, we have Grayson Konkial. Grayson is a first-time state qualifier this year, two-time regional champion, three-time All-Lake County, and was the champion in 2022-23. He finished this season with a record of 34 and 14, 28 of those by pin, which is tied for second-best in a season. He finished with 109 career wins, which is seventh on the all-time list. And then, last but not least, this gentleman standing next to me, William Cole. William is a two-time IHSA state qualifier, sectional champion this year, two-time regional champion, two-time Lake County champion, 45 wins this season, which ties the season record for most wins. He won six tournaments this year and was a fourth-place finisher at the state tournament, the first-ever heavyweight wrestler in school history to medal at the state tournament. So, and he's only a junior, so excited for the future and really, really proud of the seniors who are up here. And if we could all just maybe join in a nice round of applause for these athletes. Okay, any family of our wrestlers who are here, if you could all come up and join us for some photos, please. Coach Schustef, you want to come up here as well, please? Coach Phylis was unable to join us this evening, but we do have Noah Schustef here from the girls' side of the program. Well, we're taking our seats back. I want to correct a mistake. I misspoke on Ireland McCain's record. She was actually 34 and four this year with how many pins? 33 by pin, so even more impressive. Thank you, everyone.
All right, next up is communications to the board, and we are very honored to have a Luda legislative update.
Yeah, so Dr. Burkey, if you want to come up and take the mic, I'm just going to do a brief introduction. Dr. Burkey is our executive director of the Large Unit District Association. He will talk about what Luda does, and I think many of you know, but I've had the pleasure of knowing John for probably almost 20 years. He's currently in his sixth year as the Luda executive director. I've been involved with Luda for 20 years, and I think he's just completely elevated the group, very forward-thinking, very visionary, incredible relationships with the people that make decisions down in Springfield, just grateful for his leadership. Prior to that, he was the superintendent for 12 years in Huntley. I think I'm correct in saying he was the superintendent there during the fastest period of growth they've ever had with student population, and I'm pretty close in knowing, I believe they were one of the first districts in Illinois that went one-to-one, and that was a long time ago. So just, I've known Dr. Burkey during my work in McHenry County, grateful for everything he does for the organization, and personally, for me, it's a learning organization. We definitely get legislative advocacy, and there are a lot of groups. As board members, you know, you go to CASBA, NSBA. In my humble opinion, for the leadership team, the quality of the learning that we get from Luda is just at a different level, and part of it is because running a unit district is so unique. I think Luda represents, I mean, we're the 48 largest districts in Illinois and includes the Chicago Public School System, Algen U46, and on and on, and I'm a little embarrassed, I even had him here earlier than this. So grateful as a board that you allowed us to have him come and meet you, to talk about Luda a little bit, but more importantly, giving you some information on what's going on in Springfield. So, Dr. Burkey.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. It's great to be here, and you didn't mention how we first met, was we used to do snow day calls together at early, early in the mornings, so when we were fellow superintendents over in McHenry County. So it is great to see all of you. It's great that you started your board meeting with the recognition. I am a little disappointed, though, all the students left. They would have loved this presentation, so if they only would have known. So anyway, let's get into this, and thank you again for having me. This actually is not my first time, it's my first time at your board meeting, but I actually have had a tour of Round Lake High School before, and so, you know, become well aware of the things, the really good things that you're doing, particularly CBE. You have, we've worked a lot on those efforts together and really appreciate the leadership and vision that your district has had with CBE. So with that, let's get into what we have tonight. So before we get into the legislative part, let me just give you a very high-level overview of what Luda is. We are an organization that was actually founded in the 1970s by a group of superintendents, because of what Dr. Mendoza said, leading a unit district, a large one, is really a different superintendent job and cabinet-level job than being in smaller districts, and those administrators wanted to be able to collaborate more together, and they also wanted a voice in Springfield that was common to large district issues. So that's how Luda came about. Today, we've got 57 of the largest unit districts in Illinois, about 3,000 students at higher. We have almost every district that's eligible. You just have to be pre-K-12, and you've got to be, and you've got to be large. Those are the two commonalities. We have districts that are very suburban. We have districts that are more urban. We have downstate districts. So we are very geographically diverse, and we have districts across all four funding tiers. So we have districts that are very wealthy when it comes to funding, and we have districts that aren't as wealthy. So we represent all of those, which really makes our organization unique, because we get to collaborate with districts that aren't just exactly like each other, but share a common interest to do what's right for the kids of Illinois. This map, the dots on this map, and I know you won't be able to read any of the towns, but hopefully you know your Illinois geography, this, each of these dots represents a Luda district, and as you can see, there's a lot of suburban districts, but there's also a lot of districts outside of the suburbs. We have a lot, it's a big swath of central Illinois that you see, and then we have some, what's your term, metro east districts, down by St. Louis, as well as, you know, some other districts around the state. And again, that's one of the things that's really, really, really good about our organization, is we're very geographically diverse. We have districts that are on the Wisconsin border. Our furthest south district is Marion, Illinois, which is almost Kentucky. So really, you know, we're a large state, but we have districts all over. So we have two main purposes as an organization. The first is to do state-level policy and legislative advocacy, and that's the part we're going to be talking about tonight. The second is we do member collaboration and professional development, as Dr. Mendoza mentioned, and we actually just had our second semester conference last week, and some of the people in this room were there, and so it was great to see everybody together in person. Okay, so the next part of this presentation is going to be kind of an Illinois Politics 101. So I'm a former history teacher, social studies, so I can't, I can't do this without doing a little bit of a 101 course. So we will, we will cover just some of the basics. So my first question for you, which shouldn't be a real challenging one, but we'll see, and I would just welcome any of our board members to shout out what you think the answer is. Is Illinois a blue state or a red state when it comes to, when it comes to overall politics?
The state of Illinois or the state of Chicago?
The state of Illinois. Illinois is a whole.
Purple.
Purple? Okay.
Purple. I have relatives that live downstate, and we're up here, so I'm going to say purple.
Okay, and you're wearing purple. That's very good, so.
Yeah, very geographically, very geographically split. South of 80 would be, would be one side, north of that, and in the Cook County collar area would be the other.
Well, I'm very impressed, because a lot of people, I ask this question kind of often, especially to people in suburbs, and the answer is often, well, of course, we're a blue state. And the answer is exactly what both of you, what both of you said. When you look at Illinois geographically, and this is by county, we are very red when you're outside of Chicago and the suburbs, with some notable exceptions. People often that live up here don't realize that, and so the thing is, the population, though, is in the suburbs and the cities. So even though a lot of this is read by geography, it's not read, it's not cumulatively read by population. The notable exceptions, there's several counties in the middle of the state, McLean County, Champaign County, and the uniqueness of them is they each have large universities, and that's what makes them unique. Peoria County is the one on the left of those two. It actually barely went, went blue, and this is the presidential election in 2020. So that's this, and then there's several metro east districts. So anyway, I'm very impressed, Dr. Mendoza, your board like is all up on, all up on this. They've, I think they would have passed the pre-test, so that's, that's very good. So why does all of this, why does all of this matter? Well, let's get into that. So Illinois is really three states politically, but it's really becoming more like two. So what it used to be was Chicago, the collar counties, and downstate. Chicago has always been reliably Democratic. The collar counties used to be reliably Republican, and downstate counties actually used to be able to go either way. They didn't look like they do today, back even 20 or 30 years ago. So this is, this is really changing to where our map looks very different between the two areas of the state, the suburbs in Chicago, and then everything outside of it. So one of the key things to know, though, is the suburban vote has become more dominant over the past 30 years. So even though downstate is more red and tends to vote more Republican, where the population is, has actually moved more to, more to the Democratic side. And there's a lot of reasons for that. We won't, that would be, that would be the 200 level course. So we'll come back and do that some other time as to why that, as to why that is. But in the last 30 years, and this is an important thing to know, in the 30 years since 1977, Illinois has actually had more years with Republican governors than Democratic governors. Again, we often think of, well, everything's controlled by Democrats. That, that has not been our history, and that's changed, too. So what's different about the statewide offices? Because more of the population is in Democratic voting areas, it is going to become increasingly hard for a Republican, especially a Republican that is not near the center, to win a statewide election. They can still win in the red areas of Illinois, and they do. I mean, there's a number of representatives and senators who are Republicans, but, but there is not a single statewide-held office right now that's held by a Republican, and, and so that's an important political dynamic to understand. We also, I don't have it on the slide, but also both of our chambers, the House and the Senate, are what's called super majorities, which means they are two-thirds Democratic, that, our governor's a Democrat. So basically, we have one-party control in Springfield, and that is really important to understand when we talk about the politics of, of our, of our state. I would just comment, when you hear about the rest of the country, there are states in this country that were just exactly the opposite. Like if you look at Florida or Texas, there, there are states where it's, it's very much like ours, but it's the other, it's the other party. This is, again, just more, more information specifically from Jim Edgar's election, and Jim Edgar was a Republican, won in 1990, he won two terms, and then, and then Governor Pritzker won in 2018, and then again, you know, just, 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 just two years ago. So again, more of the vote is coming from Democratic, Democratic areas. So that's just kind of the 101 to understand, that when you look at the politics in Illinois, you really have to look at what are, is the, is the Democratic Party advancing? What is a more, more liberal agenda advancing? Because they really are in, are in control right now. And again, whether you personally, politically agree, disagree with that, this is just a fact that's really important to understand. So let's start, now that we've done our 101, let's start looking at Illinois's budget. This is going to be one of the big issues this year. So I'd like to start with looking, oh, this is still part of the 101, so I'm sorry, we're still going to, this is going to be the budget part of 101 as we talk about this year. Let's look at where the state gets its money and where it spends its money and what that can tell us. So on the revenue side, Illinois gets its money from predominantly two major sources, the individual income tax and the state sales tax. And then there's, as you can see, a smattering of others, from, you know, corporate income tax, you know, federal aid, but, but the two biggest chunks are the sales tax and the individual income tax, and if you couple the corporate income tax with the individual income tax, you're over 60%. So why does that matter? Well, Illinois, because of where it gets its money, is just very prone to up-and-down cyclical revenue issues that tie to the larger economy, because when the economy accelerates, typically there's more spending, more sales tax, and typically people are working more. They, more people have jobs and their wages go up. And as you, you're well aware, wages on the, on the most part have gone up a lot, certainly since the pandemic. So that's been really, really healthy for, for the state of Illinois, like extremely healthy. So where do we spend our money? Well, 26% of it goes to education. So we, and this is, this is, this is pre-K through, through college level, 26% of it goes to education. We actually get a really large chunk of Illinois's expenditure, and that's really important to understand. Human services, which covers a, you know, a number of, of social services, other entitlements, get 21%. So that's a large part as well. Healthcare is another large part. And then a real large part, if you look in green, is pensions. Pensions are almost 20% of the state expenditures, and what's important to know about that number is that's what's called pension debt. It's debt that has been accumulated actually over the last 100 years. And so that is money that the state has to put into the pension debt to continue to pay down, to pay down that debt. What's, what's termed the normal cost in pensions is the, is the cost that employees pay, the cost that the district pays, and that is done by districts and, and, and the employees as, as well. So again, pensions, nothing is, can be done about pensions. That's going to be 20% of our budget for some time, because the pensions are constitutionally guaranteed. It's already been tested in the Illinois courts, and so it kind of is what it is. So that's a 20% that's going to happen off, off the top. And of course, those other things are somewhat flexible to a point, but not, obviously not completely flexible. So the key takeaways, and by the way, that data I just showed you came from the governor's proposed budget that he just advanced a couple of weeks ago. He just spoke on it and put that forward a couple of weeks ago. So what are some takeaways? Like I said earlier, K-12 education has fared very well in the governor's 20, it's the FY 2025 budget. We're doing well. He is recommending that EBF be funded at 350, which is what it's been funded at every year since it was passed, except for the year of COVID in 2020, and so that's a real positive thing, especially for our Tier One districts. And I do expect to see that continue to be a very top priority. Now, I talked earlier about Democrats and Republicans. I can tell you, there is bipartisan support for funding EBF. This is one really nice thing about Springfield, is this has not been a partisan issue, and that is a real positive and why I'm very confident that EBF will continue to be funded, again, unless something catastrophic physically happens, and that could happen, but if, but barring that, I'm very confident we'll see that in the next few years. The other thing to know is Illinois has a structural deficit. So even though we are really good on paper, some of that is because of the federal dollars that have come in since COVID, in the terms of, you know, in the terms of federal, federal relief and federal stimulus money, and some of it is because of the really large tax receipts that I talked about, because of the economy. So that necess, that won't necessarily go on, go on forever, but it's definitely the case right now. Tier Two pensions still need to be addressed. So again, I won't get into Tier Two. I'm sure you've had some little bit of discussion added at the board level, but Tier Two was enacted in 2011, and it's what all, all people hired after 2011 are in a whole different pension system called Tier Two. And the bottom line is Tier Two doesn't meet the federal Social Security exemption requirement. So, you know, teachers and people in the pension are, they are not in Social Security. So they don't pay Social Security tax. Your district doesn't pay Social Security tax on them, and they don't collect Social Security, because they get, they get TRS instead. But Tier Two doesn't meet that, that exemption. So it, it's complicated, but probably in a year or two, that's when the first test is going to be done, and it's going to have to be fixed before then. Everybody in the legislature knows this, and I fully expect that before a year from now, I think Tier Two will get fixed, and when I say fixed, it won't look like Tier One, the, the state can't afford to make it look like Tier One, but I do think it's going to be adjusted enough to, to meet what's called the safe harbor target, which will keep Tier Two pensioners outside of Social Security, because that would cost your district a lot of money, and it would cost employees a lot of money if they have to, if they have to pay into both, both systems. So it needs to be addressed, and I'm very confident it, it will be. So a little bit about this session we're in right now. Every General Assembly is a two-year legislative session, so it's, it's really a two-year cycle. We're actually in the 103rd General Assembly, so we're over 100, which means over, you know, 200 years. And the session generally runs from January through May, and there's a two-week veto session after the fall election, and then there's a lame duck session in early January before the next session will start in the middle of January. So we're in the thick of legislation right now. In fact, I'll be heading to Springfield tomorrow, and, you know, I'm there most of the time when the legislature is in session. So you're going to hear a lot about bills and legislation from now until the end of, end of May, and I know you've already heard a lot, but you're going to continue to hear that, and it will only accelerate as we get closer to May. The budget I talked about earlier has to be passed by May 31st, or else it has to be passed by a super majority. So the legislature always, if at all possible, wants to pass the budget by May 31st, and they've done that the last number of years. They didn't always under the last governor, but I believe every year under this governor, they have passed the budget on time. And then we're in, we're in election season. Again, you can't escape knowing that we have an election this year, and there's a big one in the fall, but the primaries are next, next Tuesday. And so in Illinois, back to what I said earlier, for, in many races, the real election is in the primary, because it's, it's, it's in many districts determined what party's likely to win that district. So the primary is the bigger election, and there are some contested primaries in, in both parties this year. Luda actually filed a mandate bill this year, and one of the concerns we have, and I think everyone in education shares this, and is that there are too many mandates from, from Springfield that affect all of, all of you. And the mandates, we often use the term unfunded mandate, but it's more than just unfunded mandates. It's mandates that put burden on your teachers' time. It's mandates that put reporting burdens on your administrators, and it's, it's everything else under the sun, and then, of course, there are the unfunded mandates. And we, we have just seen these continue to pile up year after year after year. When I went into education in the early 1990s in the teachers' lounge, teachers were complaining about mandates then, and 30 years later, it hasn't And 30 years later, it hasn't gotten any better. In fact, it's gotten worse because nothing almost almost nothing ever goes away. So when these regulations are passed, these mandates are passed, they keep adding up and adding up, and it's really become a burden for school districts all across the state of Illinois. And I can tell you that whether it's a superintendent, a classroom teacher, or any anything in between, these mandates really affect the employees of a school district. And so we're extremely concerned about it. I'm not going to get into the details of our bill, but what it does in essence is it just makes the legislature have better information about bills before they discuss and vote on bills. And the analogy I use is it just has them follow the same process you follow at this board table, where when you vote on things, you have full background from your superintendent and your other administrators, and you you have that information at least in the packet, a public packet 48 hours before. But often, you've been talking about it for a lot longer than than that. Sometimes the legislators will vote on things they've never seen before. So we we're just looking to try to to try to change that that culture. So whether or not we'll be successful, we think we're advancing a really important conversation. So I'm not going to go through these in any detail, but I just wanted to give you a sampling of some of the things that are sitting before the legislature this this year. The budget, I mentioned that pensions, I mentioned that. There's a bill that would limit teacher choice with 403B vendors that would require your district only to to have one 403B vendor. That's a potentially big issue for some of our districts that have multiple, some have seven, eight vendors. This is one you might have particular interest in as a school board, as a school board. There is a bill before the Senate right now that would require you to have a student board member. The way the bill's written right now, it would also require that that student board member is part of your closed session. We have a lot of concerns about this bill, and it's not that we're against student board members. If if we have districts that have student board members, if it is, if it is something you've decided is the right thing for your board, and you have a way to make it to make it work and be effective, that's great. We just think this is not a one size fits all for all 852 districts in Illinois. I I I'm not like telling you this because I think, oh, my gosh, this bill's going to become law next week, but I'm just highlighting some bills that are that are out there that we are all working, working on making sure we do what we can, that they don't become law, at least the way they're currently written. There's a bill that mandates teacher plan time. We're very pro teacher plan time. We all are. Teachers all need more plan time. That that's not what the debate is. The the debate is when we have a mandate from Springfield about how long it has to be, when it has to happen, how it can't be broken up into different chunks. It doesn't work in every building across the state, and this is a particularly challenging issue at the elementary level in in all, I would say, almost all of our districts. There's a bill that would limit athletic practice times to to three hours a day. And again, you know, on the surface, that might make sense in most cases, but we just think that's something that should be dealt with by IHSA, with their member districts. And again, there's there's exceptions where where we need to look at those. So I'm just concerned about the legislature actually putting that into legislation. There's a bill that we can only purchase curriculum materials that align with the new state literacy plan. Again, not necessarily a bad thing, but that's something that's out there. In this one, there's a bill that would require that schools now remove ticks. So 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 this bill, again, it's a well-intentioned bill, and and somebody who put it forth is a student who got a tick and got Lyme disease. I mean, a very serious issue. But but the concern is, is that is that it's different in every situation. You may have nurses that are qualified to do that, but you may have situations too where you want to call a parent and say, you know, hey, we just want to make you aware that we've seen a tick. How do you want us to handle this? And the parent may say, please, you know, I I want I want you to send him home. Thank you for letting me know. We just think that's a better way to deal with it than mandating that this that the school nurse or or other official has to remove, you know, a tick. Again, we're educators, not 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 healthcare providers, even though we, you know, we do do elements of that. So that's a bill that concerns us the way it's written. There's a bill that would mandate seat belts on school buses. Have a lot of concerns with this for various reasons, not because we don't want kids to be as safe as possible. But there's there's some some debate about about when seat belts are most effective, when they're not. And then there's just a whole issue about how would that be implemented? So the last thing there is is there's lots, lots, lots more. I literally just picked out a sampling. I don't know the number exactly, but there's at least, I believe, over 500 bills related education that are active right now. It's a lot of bills. Most of them will never become law. So if you hear like on the if you hear like on the media or something, well, this bill's out there, you don't automatically have to get concerned. Uh-oh, uh-oh, I gotta contact my legislature legislator. Ask Dr. Mendoza, say, hey, what do you know about this? And he and he reaches out to people like me and says, hey, is this is this likely to happen? Do we need to get our board activated? And we'll let you know, like on the school board bill, that that bill's not even assigned to a committee right now, which means it's not right now going anywhere. But if it does start to go somewhere, I would let our superintendents know who could in turn make sure that all of their boards are aware. So that's kind of the high-level overview of what is going on this this session. You just got to remember legislators' job is to legislate. So it's not a surprise that they file a lot of bills. That that's what they do. Our job is to slow down, change, or stop bills that aren't going to be good for you. And I think that's a healthy dynamic that we have in Springfield. And I can tell you, most legislators, regardless of which side of the aisle they're on, are pretty good to work with when it comes to making their bills their bills better. Again, most people are most legislators are very pro public education, and so they want their schools in their districts to 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 be better. So that's the good thing is I think people are often coming from a good place, even if we don't always agree with the the way they're trying to get to that good place. So with that, that's the that's the end of my 101. That's the end of the formal legislative bills, but I would be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, hearing none, but thank you very much. Very detailed, very much appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Mendoza, for getting it on the calendar. Definitely would be a great thing to have on a recurring basis, probably like semiannually.
I would be happy to come back anytime. The only caveat is I will come back next time with the 200 level course. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berkey.
All right, next up, we are to the CEDOL governing board recap. Mr. Jewett.
So we have the CEDOL governing board on Wednesday, and there were a handful of topics, and I'm just going to hit those really briefly. And then I wanted to ask something of Dr. Mendoza, actually. And I know you're gonna you're gonna probably know where I'm going, actually. But so there's the proposed sale of well, there was financial information, went over the nomination for the solicitation for a nomination for more governing board officers. There was a report on the tax complaints report. There was about the sale of property to Mundeline School District 75 because of a new a new building for that tech campus, but new like vocational, a new vocational building. There was the approval of the of Dr. Donan's retirement. There was a the hire for the two superintendents that are going to be taking her place for the one-year contract in her stead. I thought that was in one of the things that that was interesting. I'm like, dang, two people for one person. Wow. But it's because they can't they can only work so many hours, and because it's actually a full-time position, they have to, yeah, because they're both retired. They kind of like a Batman and Robin thing going on, quite honestly, where they go, I'm like, man, that's a gig. I got the wrong, wrong career. It's a Dr. Judy Hackett and a Dr. Tim Thomas. They're actually doing some work right now. Both I think both of them were in special ed at one point, and I think they're on Elgin now, from what I remember, and are are we're going to be coming in July. And there was a review of the strategic plan, and that really took the the bulk of the meeting in terms of some of the things that are going on with with them. They've got a lot. I mean, it's like 12 different key points that are working to get done and just reported on that. But one of the things that really stood out to me is the the governing board feels like there's a lot of people getting together, and it's it's more of an informational session in practice. And I don't know if that's I don't have a recommendation for that, but it feels like there could be I I get it, and on one part, I understand it. But it feels like a governing board with no governing.
So I don't disagree with what you're saying. I it's only my I think I've been on the the executive board for 15 months, and I think one of the things at that level we've talked about is charging the two new interim superintendents with doing an analysis of how it should be governed. So I guess what I would say to the board, I think you all know this, but the executive board, I would say, is more akin to what you do here, and I agree with you. So I don't I think it's a little bit odd to have two separate boards. I think at your level, the governing board, the benefit to that is every district is represented, but to do what, right? So that is not the only model out there for special education co-ops. I believe one of the things we're going to charge them to do is give us a recommendation on how CEDOL is governed. Because I think I think both groups feel the same way that you just explained.
Cool thing. And you can put it in, this could have been a memo, right? This anyway.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
As 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 the previous person who used to go to those meetings, I wholeheartedly concur that it's completely run by a much smaller board and rubber stamped by a much bigger board.
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate the information. I appreciate the chance for questions and.
We we get to ask questions and do nothing else.
That concludes unless anybody has any other questions.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. FOIA report, any questions from the board for the administration for the FOIA report as listed? Hearing none. Next up is review contracts under 1,000. We did not have any this cycle, so we will move on to opportunity for public comment. As always, members of the public will participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments will be accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting, and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, the electronic public comment will be provided to all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment form can be found online. We did not have any electronic public comment. Do we have any local public comment? You're good? All right. Hearing none, then we will move on to superintendent's report and turn it over to Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Board President Francisco and school board members. On February 26th, our high school graphics capstone instructor, Carolyn Corcoran, who all of you know, she was involved in our strategic planning process, took a group of students to the Gurnee Endeavor Health Facility to film interviews with two healthcare professionals. Students crafted the questions, created storyboards, identified and packed the needed equipment, and ran the interviews with support from Endeavor's community outreach department. During class time, students are editing the film and will share final products in the coming weeks with Endeavor to use as promotional materials. This was an authentic and meaningful career experience in the ISB-identified arts and communication pathway. Endeavor Health is a fantastic community partner and chose Ronlake area school district 116 as one of only three districts in Lake County to work with as they build out their community, their school community outreach program. Rosalind Franklin University is partnering with District 116 again this year to open internship opportunities to high school students interested in the field of medicine. Inspires an eight-week mentoring and applied research program designed to build the pipeline for underrepresented in medicine students pursuing higher education in the fields of science and biomedical research. Three Ronlake High School students, Patrice Ashford, Jessica Hernandez, and Elizabeth Devila, have been accepted into the program scheduled for this coming summer. And of course, we will give the board an update after that's completed. On March 1st, the CDC issued new isolation recommendations for respiratory viruses. The Illinois Department of Public Health announced that it is adopting the updated guidance from the CDC that streamlines and simplifies recommendations for dealing with a range of respiratory viruses, including COVID-19, flu, and RSV. The CDC guidance no longer requires those who test positive for COVID-19 to isolate for a minimum of five days before returning to work or other activities. New guidelines focus on isolation until symptoms improve, which could be shorter or longer than five days. The guidance indicates that people can return to work or normal activities when symptoms have been improving for 24 hours. And if a fever was present, they are fever-free for 24 hours without the use of a fever-reducing medication. There are no longer any requirements to report positive cases to rest of respiratory viruses, including COVID-19, to the school nurse or the Lake County Health Department. And that concludes the March 11th superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dr. Mendoza or the administration?
Did that relieve administrative burden on the school?
Yes. I mean, it it is progressively gotten better. If you think about way back and almost like I get jitters thinking about it, it went from the 10-day isolation down to the five-day fever-free, but you have to wear a mask. And I think, again, I just, this will be, I think, probably the final layer that will ease whatever the burden is. But I I do think people are making more responsible choices about not coming to school if they're not feeling well, which, I mean, it's in bad. That is one of the pieces behind our student attendance rates is we're encouraging people not to come if they're sick. I think everybody at the table here, I'm the leader of I just historically have just powered through stuff. Hate to say it, but pop the Advil, feel fine, I'm going to crank the workout. But I think people are being more thoughtful about it.
But with the with that conversation in hand, are we going? How do we go about working with the state? Because you still get the nasty grams when the kid is over 10 absences in a semester, when it comes to chronic drudism and all of that. So it's hand in hand. Those don't work well together.
Yeah, I I think what is finally starting to happen, that is obviously that's not a Ronlake decision, but I think if you remember, I talked about what does the definition of attendance mean? Does it mean physically at school? I mean, again, I'm going to use an extreme example, but you have kids coming that aren't doing anything, and they're not, and they're getting full credit for attendance, whereas you have some other kids who miss. We we have set up this technology ecosystem for them to communicate with their teacher, to submit the work on time. So I just think if if I could wave my magic wand, it would almost correlate two levels of engagement and mastery of content is should directly be tied to the attendance rate. So but it's finally being discussed. I didn't see it on Dr. Berkey's bill list, so I think we're a little bit out still. So.
Thank you. All right, that will bring us to committee reports, and we had a community engagement committee meeting this evening.
Hi, everyone. Yes, we did have a community engagement meeting tonight. One of the first things that we talked about was the parent-teacher advisory meeting we have scheduled. It's coming up this Thursday, March 21st. Probably you know, but this committee assists in the development of student behavior policy and procedure and provides information and recommendations to the board. Some of the invitees include central office and school leadership. The community engagement committee is going to be there, teachers, staff, and some parents. Some of the things we'll be discussing, discussing, excuse me, will be behavioral codes, health and wellness procedures and resources, school safety procedures, and partnerships with area. health and wellness procedures and resources, school safety procedures and partnerships with area emergency response departments. Um some new procedures for twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, for example, would be um student access to personal cell phones. Um questions and feedbacks are gonna, excuse me, questions, feedback, and recommendations are gonna be taken. Um and then we'll bring back feedback on that basically for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Um but this is the first year that we've had teachers involved. Um and we have several items, like I mentioned, for the betterment of the district, but we're just collecting feedback. And then we're gonna also use that as an opportunity to answer questions for the elementary school configuration plan. Um so that's gonna be happening this Thursday. Any questions on that? Anything you guys want to add? The next thing that we discussed was the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school registration communication plan. Um some of the target audiences is the administration, secretaries, um all of of the other staff, obviously, parents, guardians, um some local daycares, and then community organizations and municipalities. Um we talked about the avenues of communication um that they're using, and they've really created a variety of avenues. Um just a couple of examples, school website, email, printed materials, text. Um onsite registration at each school, so there's a couple different um avenues that they've explored. Um we talked a little bit about the key messages. Um they are going to be doing a soft launch April first. This um gives them the opportunity to identify and address any possible bugs. And it helps um get the message out for the early bird discount. The full-scale launch will be be going on Wednesday, April third. And then the early registration discount deadline um ends Sunday, June sixteenth. So they were, they're hoping to get everybody registered, registered, excuse me, by July first. Um and then subsequently, anybody after that will be, um who has not been registered will be targeted. So it's, they're able to identify who has not done it and reach out. They talk about the registration documents and they have a way, um a system that we use to help ease that a little bit. And then the process, there is um a link online in the new uh website to the process of that as well. Um we talked a little bit again about the timeline, the pre-registration phase, um registration periods, and then the follow-ups. Um and then who they assigning of their responsibilities, so they're designated in specific staff members or teams for managing communication efforts and then um creating registration instruction, things like that. They are gonna have a feedback mechanism for when the registration process is complete. So once it's done, they're gonna reach out to the parents to pr- pr- get feedback on that um and see if there's any ways that we can improve that. And then they have a couple of new things that they are gonna be including in the registration this year. One of them is um how long the family has been in the United States, and this is specifically to target newcomer families so that they can get help and outreach programs included to them, which I thought was brilliant. And then are they going to be a walker, um a parent pickup, or a bus? And this is again to just kind of streamline the situation with um parent pickup and drop off. So I think uh that's kind of the overview on that. Anything that you guys want to add? That I missed? Okay. And then the last thing that we discussed um was the Partner School Family Outreach Communication. This is sort of a living document, so you guys probably are very familiar with this, but it just talks about kind of our channels that we've been using for um outreach to let people know about the the Partner School and the change that will be upcoming. Um we talked a little bit about the communication timeline, what they've done. They actually have already started campaigns on social media, created a website for, a website page for the information sharing, began email campaigns, provided updates, new letter newsletters. They have sent direct mail messages to impacted families and then distributed initial press release. Um they've also um continued um the announcements on social media websites. So they're really hitting it heavy kind of in all the different avenues to let people know what's going on. And then they have um in-person opportunities to visit in the schools coming up as well. So there's gonna be quite a few um options that people will have if they have questions or um a lot of outreach being done. Um and then they went over, if you look at the packet, you'll see a couple of things that they have already done, and there's quite a few things that they've already done. Um as far as the outreach, um you probably have noticed they're gonna, they have set up booths. Um so for example, if you guys went to the Alder Superband Festival, you have seen them there. Um so they're they're going to a lot of very heavily attended events to kind of get that messaging out as well. And then they have um a virtual Q and A session coming up, and then um that's gonna be three fourteen and then another one for on uh April eighteenth. So um that's gonna be, they also have a meeting to discuss um partnerships with local daycares. If there's any issues with people that have multiple children in the district, maybe having to go to school at the same time. So that's gonna be something that they're addressing also and kind of getting proactively ahead. And then again, ongoing social media campaigns, electronic direct mail, and then backpack flyer communications as well. And then the last thing we discussed, if you guys, I don't know if you guys want to add anything else to that, but was the um monthly informational snapshot, which is in the packet. If you get a chance, check that out. Um but yeah, that was the overall everything that we discussed. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. And that will bring us to approval of open meeting minutes.
I need a motion to approve the February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four uh special board meeting expulsion hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the March fifth special board meeting expulsion hearing at five thirty P M.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
I'm staying.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the March fifth, twenty twenty-four special board meeting expulsion hearing at six thirty P M.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
I'm staying.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I need a motion to approve the accounts payable, the consent agenda for the accounts payable report for seven hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents in the March eleventh, twenty twenty-four employment report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mr. Devera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to old business, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five student fees.
I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student fees as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Just as a clarification, um the fees were pulled out of this one.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to that. I remember uh last board meeting, it was brought up to finance, and there was a conversation in regards to adding the processing fees passed on to the families for credit cards and and the forms of payments that they would elect. I think the administration could sense uh from the board that it's not a cost we're ready to to pass on to our families. It's fifteen thousand dollars, as Dr. Kibbin's shared with the board, what that cost is. And in the greater budget that we have, absorbing that fifteen thousand dollars for our families is not an issue at this time. So it's as presented last week, no fees, and as Mrs. Klinger mentioned, the community engagement, there's a twenty-five dollar early registration discount.
Thank you. Hearing no additional questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, new business. I need a motion to approve the agreement between the Ron Lake Park District and the Ron Lake High School for the rental of the indoor soccer field at the sports complex for the Allied Soccer Season in the amount of two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Ms. Lee.
This was at finance at the last meeting as well. Bless you. Um this is uh the contract for our allied soccer team. Uh this gives them a guaranteed venue uh is again with the season, and they need a very structured and steady schedule. And this has been a yearly uh contract with the Park District.
Thank you for that clarification. Hearing no additional questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for that. Yep, that's why he's the best in the business.
All right, I need a motion to approve the A Little Seen contract for the twenty twenty-four RLH, RLHS prom on May fourth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This is coming out of the RLHS Student Council Activity Account.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Lee.
And again, this was on the finance committee last meeting. Again, this has been an annual trinket souvenir for the prom that the uh Student Council pays for.
Thank you for that. And roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the B O E travel expenses reimbursement related to the National COSBA Conference in February twenty twenty-four in the amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Ms. Lee.
So I just want to clarify, because I know my expense report looks a little larger than the others.
But thank you for that, for stepping up to be able to handle that.
Cause we made her do it. She did it all.
There's obviously an issue in check-in, so as you all know, I use my AMX and I had to pay for the room um at at the check-in. So that's why mine is thousands of dollars more. But I actually got us a cheaper rate than we originally had, so. I negotiated at the desk.
Because if anybody has had the pleasure of traveling with Mrs. Gretchen McGinley, they know that she will definitely get something out of the front desk, people.
Have to negotiate.
Some call negotiate, some call prison tactics. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes, and I'd like to learn those tactics before we go to New Orleans.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion next is eighth grade field trip.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought that was a motion. Uh eighth grade field trip. Look at these two.
Uh as you know, every year, um even before the pandemic, except for the pandemic years, uh we've taken an annual field trip for eighth graders to DC. All eighth graders are invited to this. Um we usually end up with a group of about twenty to thirty that go. Uh this past weekend was actually our trip of twenty twenty-four. We had twenty-two um eighth graders wet, and the nine eleven memorial was a huge hit um with them. So um you know, this is tied to their social studies curriculum, students get to visit the Capitol, museums, memorials, like I just talked about, uh buildings of significance. And we're here tonight to request, we would like to request that the board approve a two thousand twenty-five trip to Washington DC for the middle schoolers, both McGee and Ron Lake Middle School. Um again, it's open to all eighth graders, but we only have usually about twenty or thirty that go. Uh they would um leave March first of twenty twenty-five and return March third of twenty twenty-five, which is Kazmar Pulaski Day Weekend. So it's a three-day weekend. They leave early in a s- on a Saturday morning. I know some of you might have had kids that are involved. It's an early, early morning there. Um and then returning, it's a great experience. Uh World Strides is the name of the organization that helps organize this and helps us put this on. And the rationale for this request is um because the topic of government is embedded at every grade level in social studies, so they get parts of uh government in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade social studies. It's also tied to uh their standards, as well as this presents an enrichment opportunity for a deeper understanding of government. I'm gonna turn the rest over to my
counterpart.
My my
partner.
Yeah, my 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 better half at work.
I'm gonna bring it home.
There you go.
So um since, because it's on a Pulaski three-day weekend, the students don't miss any school. That's one of the benefits. The travel agency that we do use, which uh Dave mentioned, the World um World Strides does an amazing job. They do all of the planning, coordinating. Um they they plan the itinerary, book the hotels. So it is a um very fluid process. It's very nice for the families, for the parents and the students. Um it is aligned to the strategic plan and as well as the curriculum, as Dave mentioned. And most importantly, when it comes down to everything's all about money, um the money is fourteen hundred and twenty dollars total for the entire trip, which the students and the parents pay for. Um there is a fundraising option that some of our students do take advantage of. Um and then for the families who want to ensure, because um it is pretty costly for our families, the, for the families who want to ensure that there's no risk, there's a option of to pay a hundred and forty-nine dollar insurance to cover full complete refund, so up to within fourteen days of cancellation. So um we're, students love it, the chaperones love it. We've had a lot of success with it and would love for you guys to consider approving it for next year for our students. Any questions for Mr. Higgs?
I do, I do have a couple of questions. Um so I I think the eighth grade trip is is a great opportunity for our students. Aren't my kids did it when they were in eighth grade?
That's pretty nice.
But um what type of fundraising opportunities and how many fundraising opportunities be available for our families so that they can afford this?
I actually am not a hundred percent sure about all of the opportunities. Last year, we ran one fundraiser, but I'm not sure what we've done in previous years. So the two COVID years were the were the off years where we didn't do anything. So as we brought it back, last year, we ran one fundraiser. Um and then we made sure that if there was any student who wanted to go, that we assisted with the fundraiser and or other support as needed. But we didn't have anyone who wanted to go who couldn't go because of fundraising. So last year was one fundraising, but I'm not sure a- about the previous years. But we didn't have anyone who wanted to go who couldn't go because of fundraising, so last year was one fundraising, but I'm not sure a- about the previous years.
There's been a few different options over the years, but uh World Strides helped to um guide some of that as we go, so what we can do is we can look into that. Into that topic and bring you more information on that specifically, so we're not, so we're not misquoting or telling you wrong information.
Yeah, it would be nice to know what opportunities are available for families and then also, you know. Most of the, our families need like a, a payment plan, so they sign up with what type of payment planner is available to those families.
Well.
I come with lots of questions.
No, but we'll get, we'll absolutely get that to you, get that to you.
I think it's important information when, you know, you ask the board to consider these opportunities for families, we need to know. What options and opportunities are available for them to, to afford it, cause fourteen hundred dollars or whatever it is. That's a lot of money for a three day trip for our families to consider and I know every eighth grader would love to attend that, but. How viable is it really gonna be based on payment options and then fundraising opportunities be able, be, you know, have for our families?
Any other questions?
I do, um I would also say that um timely communication is key with this as a, as a parent who's had. Two kids go, one was a COVID year, so he missed out, but um giving the parents ample opportunity to come up with these funds. Um in advance, what would be your timeframe for announcing this to parents?
Well, the beauty with this trip is, is it's, it's a pretty popular ship, even though only twenty two students went, uh most of the students are aware of it. So we talk about it from the very beginning of the year, so we talk about all of the, the opportunities at the beginning of the year. Uh when we have students, actually over the summer, when students come in, we talk about all the opportunities, but then we revisit them. At the beginning of the school year and then probably on a weekly basis through our announcements, so our families are, are, are. Informed pretty quickly, but what we're gonna do is, is Dave and I'll connect tomorrow and we'll gather up the information on. You know, what have been the previous fundraising, what we did last year, but what are the opportunities? And then we'll ha- we'll bring back specific information, but we can, we do communicate it pretty quick and often, because we want to try and encourage as many students. Um is, is possible to go that wanna go, but we also try not to do too much pushing where we're pressuring people either.
I, I know, and I know that the students don't always bring back the information to their parents. I don't have any guilty parties at all, but um and I think we did some popcorn fundraising in the past, there was, I, that was at least one.
I can't remember what the fundraising that was used.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering is, in addition to that, maybe you could talk to Heather about not just, not just the building communication, but. Outreach from the buildings to the families directly, um we can.
That kind of is my next question, cause uh if I have a seventh grader this year, it would be nice to know at the end of this school year that my. Soon to be eighth grader has this opportunity and what that cost is, cause obviously we know what the cost is. So at least letting the families know upfront what that cost is, they, they'll know this is a thin reach, even knowing there's fundraising opportunities.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree, I, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't communicate that still before school's out, once it's approved. I think, I like Jeff said, it's a great idea.
I know I sound like a broken record, but I just have to call out the chaperones, making sure that they're heavily vetted. I know we have a process in place for that, but I just, I have to. Yeah, thank you for understanding that.
I, I think I'd like to also take this time as you're asking, cause this is a school sponsored event, this Washington eighth grade trip. But this is more for administration, cause I've seen, you know, the high school has trips coming up that aren't sponsored from the high school. It's very clear that we delineate what is sponsored from the school and those that are outside trips, not sponsored from the school.
Yeah, so I um I put together a draft uh procedure for that and it is currently sitting with legal counsel. Getting vetted, once that's done, we'll push that to the board and make sure that our uh secondary principals have the same thing. And that is definitely one of the pieces inside of that procedure is that notification on communication and, and. Guidance on how many times they can use official um. Channels of communication to communicate with parents, so that should be, uh I, I anticipate any day coming back from legal counsel.
And also I think it, ho- hopefully it will see that in there that it clearly delineates school sponsored or not, because I've seen, I saw recent. Push of communication on this high school trip, they're going, going to Cambodia or not sure exactly where. Families are thinking that is a school sponsored trip, but it is not.
So I'll touch base with uh Mr. Peterson on that one, um but in the, and I don't want to speak too specifically, cause I'm still waiting for. Legal counsel, uh but that was one of the key things is. Uh making sure that any of the messaging is clearly different than our normal messaging and. Uh parameters and directions on, on what needs to be included in any communications regarding that trip. That would delineate that this is not a district sponsored activity.
As, as a parent, if I have a middle school and a high school, I'd like to know, okay, this, this is coming from the district, this is like aligned. To a strategic plan, the one with the high school, this is a offshoot, something that's just being offered.
Yeah, so that, that should, that will all be in there and um again, I, I'm hoping uh any day I get something back from legal so that we can. Make that official, you know, get that to you guys and, and get that out.
Thank you. To, to piggyback on that, as, as a parent that sent my children on a trip. When they were in middle school, on a trip that I thought was school sponsored that wasn't school sponsored, um hopefully in that thing that legal's looking over is. Very specific responsibilities of chaperones, both on and off of school trips, cause things transpired that. Made me less than thrilled, then I found out it wasn't quite a school sponsored trip, so certain rules didn't exactly apply.
Yeah, so we'll have to talk with them about how that works, um there, we have to watch. There, there's a line at which if we're too involved, then we kind of conflate ourselves with the trip. Um but again, once I get that back, if the, if there's commentary, we, I'm more than happy to discuss and, and provide either. What legal gave us as um rationale for having things a certain way? Or just answer any questions that, that might be existing.
Thank you, I, I think the eighth grade trip is, is wonderful for the kids, so.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll uh, we'll get you guys the answers tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we have a motion on this one?
It's information discussion only. So it'll be coming back, so it'd be great to have that information, when it comes back, I'm assuming in the next board meeting for action.
Thank you, now I can read it, thank you. Alright, next up are positive occurrences. Well, throw out there, guard, had sixth place finish in W G I, which is the best that they've ever done. Uh amazing job with them at the, at the national event there, um of course. Um Mr. Carol Zach was in here, but he was running, we had our uh opening night for girls soccer, was out in the stadium today. Um so that season uh, spring sort of sports seasons have kicked off. Uh boys volleyball starts next week on Thursday down in Larkin. Uh track is up and running, baseball starts in a couple of days, so all, all kinds of good.
I don't know if we talked about the band fest, I, I can't remember if that was before, I was just trying to identify the date, but that was awesome. I went to two of the four shows and, um the choir and then um one of the bands, but it was, it was really good. It was really, I think a little bit um easier to digest, just having it in sections. Um cause it, it gets a little long, it's kinda hot and the bleachers are painful if you're old like myself. But it was good, thank you for that.
And um I know they already went, they're over there, um the both, both middle schools, Round Lake Middle and. McGee uh sent wrestlers to the state finals uh over at N I U, uh and they finished well. Uh so again, great job across the entire district when it comes to the wrestling program. Um amazing just to see the opportunities that our students are having. Alright, alright, hearing nothing else on that, uh just again, also positive occurrence, but as a reminder, Wednesday we have the. I S B Lake Division uh dinner in Mundeline, so looking forward to that as well. Alright, next up is future agenda items. And I will throw one out there and this is more maybe in athletics, but it's really for the middle schools. Um it just dawned on me with having both middle schools sending the, sending the teams there. Um and considering that both of, both of those schools feed to the same high school program. When it, when they go to the actual state finals at N I U, that might be a good chance to have. Um Round Lake Middle and McGee travel together. Um same hotel, be able to, to do some of that sharing, yes, there's still two teams when they're there. But the ability to, to coordinate that, because ultimately they're still all gonna be the same wrestlers or the same program when they get to the high school. Just a thought.
And both of our middle school principals are here, one is anyway.
Say one left.
So.
Excellent, but just like travel wise, put them on the same bus.
And cost effective.
Yep. Alright, uh hearing no additional future agenda items, then we will move to some approval of closed session minutes from prior meeting.
Need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of February fifth, twenty twenty four regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Ms. Larson, roll call please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, next up, I need a. I need a motion to convene in closed session as permitted by statute five I O C S one twenty slash two. For the purposes of discussing the following, employment matters, five I O C S one twenty slash two C one. Collective negotiating matters, five I O C S one twenty slash two C two and closed meeting minutes, five I O C S one twenty slash two C twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mrs. Klinger, roll call please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, that will bring us to the end of our open session for this evening, thank you all uh who are online, uh our. Our next uh meeting at, for my calendar is correct, is next week, three eighteen, so we will see you then.